It's four o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the City Council Work Session Meeting for Minutrista, June 26, 2023. This is a special time. It's four to five o'clock. We're hoping to get through this in an hour. I'm Lisa Whelan. I'm the mayor. Also with us this evening are council members Kathleen Revkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, and then staff present, our Director of Public Works, Gary Peters, Ellie Palfus, Director of Administration, and then Don Matzko, City Clerk, Jasper Krugel, City Administrator Brian Grimm, Finance Director, David Abel, Community Development Director, and Chief Paul Falls. With that, I just have one question or one. If we get through the budget discussion early enough, what I'd like to suggest, because afterwards, we have a meeting from six to 5:30 to 6:30. To make sure that we get through that, because there's a planning commission, I was going to suggest that if we have time, we do staff and council reports under our work session. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay. So, and we'll do staff reports first, or should we do council reports? And then if we have time, we do staff?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll do council reports and then staff reports. Sorry. Thank you. With that, we, the only other thing, of course, budget discussion, who wants to take it? Brian?
Hi. I can't.
David. David's.
All right, David. Let's get it.
Recommend approval.
All right. Well, yeah, I'll start on Jasper's. Because I'm, no, I'm not connecting to the Wi-Fi here, and I've never had that problem before, so I'm sort of flying blind a little bit.
Go off a memory.
Yeah. But, so, yeah, I mean, the reason of this discussion today is, I mean, I think multi, or for multiple reasons. One is always, it's good to get on the front end, whatever the council's thoughts are as far as what's, you know, an acceptable, at least range for a levy, looking.
Here, I'll do that one.
So, but, yeah, and especially with having two new council members, I think it's, you know, a good idea to start talking about budget on the front end, or two new council members are first time through the process, to be able to, you know, get everyone's input, but also maybe to teach a little bit, or even answer questions too, for that council has, just as far as even the overall budget process, you know, what all goes into our tax levy, what goes into our general fund, you know, services we provide. So, I really don't have a formal presentation tonight. It's probably going to be more of a Q and A, as far as based on City Council and what was included in the pack, and if there's any questions on the documents there, or just in general.
Brian, why don't you just start out again, just kind of for the rookies here? Kind of the process, what are the next, you know, after this, what's the next step and timeline and so on?
Sure.
Real quick.
Yeah, so, what we've done traditionally is that staff right now is working on sort of our budget committee group, which is pretty much the department managers are starting to look at the different components, as far as the operations, the capital improvement plan, the equipment, roads, and we're all starting to look at that. So we've had a couple meetings at the staff level. And then council will see the more detailed, I guess, fruits of that labor, starting at the August work sessions, once we've had a chance to put together those, you know, draft or pro forma documents. So, what we're really looking for here is just, we want to make sure we're not going down, you know, like, the wrong path at all, like if council says, well, we really, you know, 10, 15% levy, you know, is too high, you know, try to look at some different things. And I tried to outline that in the memo, that there's a lot of things that were, I guess.
So tonight is kind of an overview.
Yep.
Giving staff direction.
Yep, yep.
Then in August, you come back with a lot of details. And then, we have another meeting in August where we can go over it again, and then we have to certify it. We usually certify it the first meeting in September. And that means we certify it to the county. I think September 30th is the deadline.
Correct.
So, we would have the second meeting if need be, but we try and do that the first meeting in September. Now, I know, Peter, you're going to be gone.
I'm going to be gone at that one, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we.
No, no, I'm not coming at the second one.
Second one?
Yeah.
So, we'll try and certify it then the first meeting. But we'll have discussed this August, both, both meetings. And then, then we have, between the time we do the preliminary certification until the first meeting in December, when we do the final, we have an opportunity to reduce it if we want to, but we can't raise it. So we can reduce the levy, but we cannot raise the levy. So sometimes we start out a bit high, knowing that we could bring it down or reduce it. Sometimes we don't have some of the, or all of the numbers as well, until after the preliminary levy. We should have most of them.
Yeah. I think, things we've looked at is, we know, like, where our building permit revenue is later in the years, and there's some different things that might, we might not know in September that we'll know in October, November better.
Right.
So we try to, I guess, at least, take that into account, that they're, you know, even give almost a little bit of wiggle room, because, you know, some years, we've, we've set the levy, the preliminary levy and left it. Some years, we found some of those things that came in, and we brought it down a percent or something like that. So, yeah, it's always good, yeah, like you emphasized, that basically, we need to set it so that, you know, you can't go up once it's set.
You can't go up.
So, basically, it's for, you know, residents to get their property tax statements, or the proposed property tax statements in November, and then to have the, the public comment in December. So that's what the, what September 30th deadline is, so that the county can prepare the data.
Okay.
I will be gone, pretty much, on September.
Right. Yeah, we'll go over as much as, generally, we, generally, we have the preliminary levy done by August or in August, and then, and then it comes back for more of a formal vote in September. Again, we can lower it between then and December, but we can't raise it. Is that?
And usually, after those couple work sessions in August, there's a, hopefully, a general consensus on the council, so that it can come back, as, you know, to be adopted by resolution. So, yeah, there's thorough discussions, and if there's, hopefully, everyone can sort of, you know, coalesce around what's at least a good starting, starting point of preliminary levy, and go from there, so.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah, I guess I can highlight, maybe just walk through the memo and see if anyone has any questions there, and then maybe can go into just other general questions, based on the other documents that were in the packet, or after that, or general questions. So, a lot of the impact, you know, that projected levy is due to, like, personnel services or staffing, you know. So we've got, you know, we had the compensation adjustments, but now we've got the, the union contracts that are in negotiation this year, so we don't know exactly where they're going to land, but we've, we've got a, a general idea, a pretty good idea, or at least of a range of where we think we're going to end up. So, we've had some meetings with the Public Works already, and the police should be coming up fairly shortly after that, so, but, but what we're seeing, we're thinking it's going to be, we're going to write around, you know, 5% increase to levy there, roughly about, you know, $300,000, when you're looking at the non-union, you know, the COLA, and then the step plan per, you know, what the council's adopted, and then the union contract, so.
Does a $300,000, though, does that cover us for the union contracts, specifically, I'm thinking about the police contract, because I've heard rumblings that it's going to be fairly, might be fairly significant?
I mean, hopefully, that's, at least, I mean, it's possible that could be slight, a little low, I guess, but it's hard to know for sure until we really get into it a little more.
Will we know by the end of August? Will we have those union contracts started?
I think the, if I may, the Public Works one, we will, for sure. The police ones are just trickling in, the initial proposals from the groups. I've received one of those today. So, we'll, we'll know generally. I know Ally's great at plugging those numbers in, and, you know, seeing where they're coming in at, and we'll look at the data. So, it'll be tight by August, you know, but we'll have an idea. I think we'll have all the proposals, so we'll know, kind of ballpark, a little bit better.
Okay.
And Public Works, is it all general fund, either? Keep that in mind.
Yep.
Right. Not all of it. Right. Yeah. So are water, yeah.
Yep. So that's one of the bigger.
Any other questions regarding that one? Okay?
Yep.
And then, general liability and workers' comp?
Yep. Yeah, so that's just pretty much our main insurance premiums, and I think we've seen the trend, and especially with the workers' comp, with some of the post-traumatic stress, you know, type events and stuff, just the overall pool. Even with being in the league of Minnesota cities, you know, workers' comp pool, it's just, I know last year went up a lot more than what I was even expecting.
That's through the LMC, though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But they don't pay, okay, does the LMC, do they pay out police PTSD and comps? Okay. That's not a separate one?
No.
But it's, but fire, state, the state fire, whatever, association, they do the fire department. Of course, that's not our.
Yeah, so I guess I'm not sure.
Okay, never mind.
That could be the case, yeah, but we don't.
I think it's a different one. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Then, a couple, I did have a question. So, we, my understanding is that we will be getting a fairly significant amount of police money. I believe it's somewhere in the realm of $360,000. I, again, we'll have to, I don't know when those numbers, those final numbers will come out. Now, so far, what I understand is that it's money that will be given for the police department. It can be spent in any way, shape, or form that we want, and there's no timeframe on it. So we'll have to wait and see how that comes out, but I keep that in mind, and when, I guess the question would be, when will we know the exact number, and when will we know the, any strings that are attached to those dollars? Do you know, Jasper?
Yeah, I can give an update. I dug into this a little bit today, and the final number that we will receive is $372,000.
More than I thought.
And we'll receive that on December 26th of this year.
Okay.
And, and there is no timeframe, but there is a stipulation it has to be spent on public safety. So it's very vague.
Right. So we have, obviously, that's good for us, because we just have the police department, I mean, the police.
Correct.
So, the question I have is, keep, with that in mind, I, I'm thinking in order, because I know this is a pretty hefty, how do you say, increase. So in order to bring that 15% down a little bit, could we use some of it to offset some of these increases in the police department? At least, and, and then, if we can kind of structure it so that, you know, if there's a 5% increase in the police department, maybe we just do a 1% this year, and then next year, you know what I'm saying? So we use up some of that money in that for policing.
Yeah, I think there'd be a way, obviously, it would, it helps with, I don't know, when you look at, like, our fund balance percentage even, obviously, that, that'll be a boost if we decide to put it in the general. I mean, there's a couple different things we could probably do. We could either put in our CIP equipment fund, or put some of it to help pay for some squads, or something to help with that piece, or we could put it, I believe, to some operational components.
Yeah.
In the general fund as well, or, you know, all of it one, or some of it, or some of the other.
Well, keep that in mind, because I think when we talk about the bottom dollar in terms of levy amount, and percentage increase, if we can offset that with some, at least some of those dollars, or offset it over a three-year period, if that's, you know, or if there's something else the council, I also thought gun range would be really nice, but with this 15% increase, I think that's, that's a huge increase. So I think, my opinion, but you guys can weigh in, I'd like to see some of it used for kind of operational and or CIP to offset that, that increase.
A couple of questions.
Yeah.
And so, we can spend it over a few years, rather than all at once?
Yeah.
Okay. And I thought I read somewhere it could not be used for facilities. Is that correct?
I did not see that in the bill language.
Okay.
It did, it was very vague. I just looked at it today, and it was for public safety-related items, and it could be either operational or capital. So I would assume that would include facilities, if we would have it in there.
Okay.
Chief, what does the department need, other than a gun range?
Well, that's a good question. I would assume that the intent behind these dollars isn't to just keep things status quo, it's to enhance public safety. I think the intent was for additional staffing, maybe equipment that you can't afford that would be very useful. Fortunately, we're in pretty good shape that way. I mean, certainly, we're looking for staff. Some departments use it towards retention. There's a lot of different things you can do. Certainly, if you were to look at what we need, there's some capital items that we could put some of the money towards. Certainly, we could use some of it towards staffing at a time when you're seeing large increases in salaries and things like that. That would make perfect sense. Cars, probably because they're so hard to get, our cars are getting older and older, so I still don't have the car I ordered last year. I got one of the two, and then I'll have to order more cars. But if, if we stay behind, we're going to have to start increasing those numbers to catch up. So, things like that. But none of that is a dramatic piece of that money.
Mm-hmm.
And then, we already have the wellness program in place. That'll be starting, so that'll be good. And then, office space is something that we've talked a little bit about, as far as facilities goes. That's the big, kind of the glaring piece for, for the next few years, where we're going to just outgrow our space, and need a couple of offices, so.
And I, I think your point about retention and or even recruiting, if there's some funds, and again, not a lot, but some of those funds be earmarked for that purpose, because it's, it's getting harder and harder, and it, we're not the only ones, and everybody is in the same boat. So, if there's something we can do, some of those, you know, maybe a portion, 10% or something like that, whatever, can be earmarked for retention and or recruiting purposes.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that would be a good idea. You're seeing more and more of that. That, that climate's changing quicker than we've ever seen it change, so, even from six months ago.
Right.
Yep.
So basically, allocate some for recruitment, retention, allocate some towards salaries, and then allocate the rest towards the capital improvements. Is the office issue, is that getting addressed at all with the workout space, like framing anything in or doing any of that?
It's going to be a discussion point, once we get the, the group that'll be doing the work here. We'll talk to them about getting it roughed in or framed out or something, to see if it fits within our budget. If it does, then we'll likely have a conversation about it. If it doesn't, we'll have another conversation about it, and these funds can go towards that, too.
We were thinking, if we could do it all at once, it might be cheaper. So, that might be something else we could use the funding for, too. I'm sure we'll find, we'll find use for it, no doubt.
Sort of like ARPA and all of it.
Yeah.
Probably more, more in each than sources, sometimes, right?
Okay. And then, you said, again, I just have some, so anybody have, have any other questions for that? Okay. Then cafeteria plan and other benefits, are we checking with all different vendors for small, I mean, or are we just going with the same people all the time?
No, we changed last year to Medica, from P.
Okay.
Yeah, and they gave us an estimate of what they think the next year's increase will be, so.
Are we gonna?
It's a little early to nail it down.
Okay. Is it a big increase?
Smaller than last year.
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we want to check with other vendors? Are there other vendors out there?
We definitely will. We'll, we'll look at the market. I know that the, the group that we signed on to administer benefits will look at that for us, and try to find us the best option. Right now, the market's just really bad. They're all, there's no good options. I think with Medica, a lot of people move to Medica.
Right.
So we'll likely see Medica increase more, maybe not next year, but in 2025. So I think, the kind of new norm will be looking at this almost annually, to see what fits us best, you know, as far as what we, what kind of benefit level we can provide our, our employees. I think the one piece that the $50,000 estimated impact has on here is looking at the cafeteria plan for the family side, which is at $1,300 a month, and moving that to 1,500, just to, to match with that increase in the cost, so that the family, the family benefit isn't as, I don't know, the $900 for single, that covers a single, the 1,300 doesn't, it only covers a portion of the family. So, I think we're, we're talking about moving that up to 1,500 from 1,300, but not moving the, the single.
But we typically look at that in September, October, so.
Okay. So this.
Yeah, this is trying to pick what the vendor increase will be, as well as if we move, you know, to, to enhance, or give a little more to the families.
Yeah, okay.
I think we have a pretty decent split, as far as singles versus family, about half and half or so, so as far as how the makeup of our employee group is.
Okay.
So, yeah, all these are a little bit fluid, but, I mean, they're at least to hopefully give, you know, good, you know, ideas as far as, you know, 300,000 here, 50,000 there, and as you get, you know, why it's, why it's, it adds up to a 10, 12, 15% increase pretty fast, or whatever, so.
So then, this first category, then, you say projected 7% increase, so with, with taking the police, maybe reducing that a little bit, maybe we're down to 5% or something like that? I don't know.
If we, you know, apply some of those dollars, we could, yeah, have some flexibility there.
Because in 2024, we have a pretty significant hit with our union contracts, and then, in '25, we wouldn't have that big hit.
Correct. Yeah, I think we're hoping that the out years of the second, third year should be a lot more manageable, as far as what the increase, once everyone's up to market, I guess, or.
Okay.
Yep. So then, the, the next area, I guess, like, you know, titled items to be addressed, is the, we've been using some of our fund balance the last, you know, few years. Some of that's, I mean, it's obviously been planned and intentional, you know, whether it was, you know, using down the CAREs and the ARPA dollars, or as well as just using our, you know, general fund, fund balance at large. So, we'd like to get back into, basically, we're having 150,000 this year for 2023, we'd like to eliminate that and get that back to basically a, a balanced budget, you know.
If we do that, what is our fund balance percentage going to be then, for 2024?
I think I, yeah, it's like, did some, yeah, on the, just the draft financial management plan here, it was right around 38%, but that didn't take, take into account, obviously, these police dollars that we didn't really know about till real recently here.
Yeah, but we kind of, we're trying to have to keep that in a separate fund, because that has to go for police?
Well, the police, the operations for police are within the general fund, the equipment piece is in our CIP fund. So really, the police home is in the general fund. So, a little different than maybe like a, you know, fire department, they have their own.
But you can't use those funds for other than police?
Correct, but police is, you know, it's pretty easy to use them on police, pretty much, when they're the biggest part of the, the general fund. So they're almost hand in hand together, I guess, or for.
Okay.
So, so that 372 will have a positive effect on the fund balance.
Right.
Either if we put it in the capital fund, or just the general fund, it'll, it'll, on the bottom line, raise that up a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll need the council to basically designate, yeah, we want, yeah, 200,000 in the general fund, 170,000 in the CIP fund, for a couple squads, or a couple few squads, or, but, yeah, so that, that will help, this number, and bump that up to, you know, over 40%, you know, if, as long as we put some portion into the general fund.
Yeah, I, I get a little nervous when it's lower than 40%.
I know, but, I don't blame you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
All right. So the first thing I'm going to say is, I realize that we're talking maybe 1% or 2% with having maybe 372,000. The way you sold it, which is good, which is excellent, the way you sold it is that we almost have to do the 15% to be able to really be where we need to be financially. The thing of it is, if we were 9% this year, increase, and now you think you're going to jump it to 15, and then we have the school, which supposedly is going to raise taxes, too. I'm a lot more comfortable with 12.
Which I think that police dollars may be able to get us closer to 12, you know, 11, 12, 13, or whatever.
That's what I'm hoping, too.
Yep, yeah.
We can't, we can't do our budget based on what the school has, is there levy or not, because the school pulls from different, the place from more communities, pulls from round end, or no, versus just not.
Yeah, but again.
And not all.
A certain individual was sold, and that could be as much as $500 extra.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
You need to be the.
Uh-uh. No, I, I think those are incorrect numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you think it's going to be?
Well, from what I've heard, again, it depends on the house, too. So, it, it can be, I mean, it depends on how you value of your home.
Anyway.
Yeah.
So my two cents, basically, in looking over the whole thing, is still try to stay within 12 to 13.
Okay.
And yes, I certainly want to keep discussing it, and discuss what the 12, 13 means we're giving up along the way, but jump from 9 to 15 is uncomfortable.
Okay. Yeah, and that's probably one of the main reasons we wanted to have this discussion tonight, is because at 15, it's too much, how do we mitigate that? And one of the ways we found out recently is that additional dollars.
So, then, I have a question, though, on number two, number B. It says one-time admin fee for our 23 road projects. It'll go away, so then you say it's a 2.5% increase?
Well, it, it's a one-time revenue source to the general fund, that we basically transfers, basically, charge the project fund, you know, that $150,000, but then, you know, so it's, it won't be available in the general fund in future years, so you've got to replace it with something. So I guess, yeah, I mean, I didn't really word that really eloquently, I guess.
It did, it was, yeah, I was confused, like, well, if it goes away, how does that increase?
Yeah. It won't, yeah, it won't be there again in 2024, I guess, so.
Okay.
Basically, it's, yeah, the, the tax levy was the logical place where, where it would be, that revenue would be funded through, so.
Okay. So the police officer thing, we're, we're talking, using potentially some of that 372,000, so that might eliminate that 2% there.
That's what I was thinking.
Then the other thing is, what if we did, and I know we need more Public Works, I know that, but would it be possible to hire a Public Works mid, mid-year? So then, it might be a little bit less. If, if that's, if it's not going to make a huge difference, then I wouldn't worry about it, but, just another thought, I mean.
We could look at it, if we would, if we would, you know, post it at the beginning of the year, likely wouldn't get hired until maybe towards the end of Q1. Keep in mind that the position that, that we're proposing is enterprise fund related, so there's a little portion that likely will be general fund, but then, I think, most of it will be sewer-related sewer fund.
So would this then actually be a 50% inc, 50,000 increase?
It could be a little bit less, and there's going to be some general fund component to it. I guess we haven't really discussed exactly if it's 75% sewer 25, or 60, 40, or, or what, so, but it could be maybe 30,000 to 50,000 or something. So, and instead, it could be a half to a percent, you know, or whatever, so.
I'm just wondering, I mean, yeah.
So I think, yeah, that one's a lot less of an impact than the one, you know, obviously, directly above it is full of general fund, but we do have those dollars we could allocate to it, that's.
Okay.
So, for B, the 2.5% hit on the levy isn't actually a hit on the levy for 2024, we just have to recoup it in 2025?
No, if the fee is, as the revenue's coming in in 2023, we won't have the revenue available in 2024. So it is the twenty-four impact.
Twenty-five, or twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I may, one, one thing that we could look at is if we sell another bond in twenty-four, twenty-five, having an admin fee associated with that, too. It's a tough thing to rely on every year.
Yeah.
Um, because we're not gonna sell a bond every year, but we do have a water project coming up, and depending on what the, the scale of that is, we could look at that as well, we just don't know off the top of our, you know.
That might be back in two thousand twenty-five, but it might not be there in two thousand twenty-four already yet, so that's where it sort of could go away and come back, or whatever, in future years, but we still, I think, you know, yeah, just we'll need to address it for two thousand twenty-four, so.
Okay.
So any other questions in that area, or as far as?
Well, we're actually gonna be needing, so obviously, um, in our regular meeting, there's the resignation from Jack Strauss, so, is he in water, is, who's the one that's kind of like a backup for the water treatment plant?
Carter.
That's Carter.
Right now, Carter and Randy can both back up right now, so.
All right, um, so actually.
And then the other thing I was gonna say with, um, in our general fund, fund balance, we'll know a little bit more by the end of November, right? What it's gonna be.
Yeah, oh, for sure, and that's, yeah, I was talking a little bit about earlier, as far as whether, and we do have, um, and obviously David knows.
I know we got a pretty big check from Duran.
Yeah, 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 so that's helped, so I think we actually will, as long as the building permits don't just dry up, which I think they seem to be.
Slowly, they're slowly chipping.
Yeah, yeah, we should end up hitting or exceeding our, our building permit revenue for two thousand twenty-three, based on what I'm seeing right now, so.
But are you seeing, and when you do your numbers, are you seeing a slowing in building revenue, or building permits? I mean, should we be thinking about less for next year, meanwhile, are we?
Well, yeah, that's gonna be a piece of it, too, what we're gonna be able to plug in for our two thousand twenty-four projected revenue, and that'll be one of the things we'll be talking about in July at a staff level.
Okay.
So, yeah, but it's not eight hundred thousand, but six hundred thousand, and you got another couple hundred thousand difference, or.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so there's definitely some pluses, but there may be some minuses, too, I guess, or.
Okay.
To put it so.
And, and I will add that the, the tax capacity valuation growth for the apartment and the grocery store won't hit the tax roll until two thousand twenty-five, so.
A portion of it would, wouldn't it?
A port, small portion, they've already made an adjustment for twenty-three for like the land valuation, but, um, the actual valuation of the building, which is the big piece, will, won't hit until twenty-five. So there will be a slight incremental increase in twenty-four, but not substantial.
It might not even hit, I think, to twenty-six, because I think, I think they do the assessing as of like January second of twenty-four, so. I mean, I think, I mean, the project should be pretty far along.
The full, the full project won't be.
Yeah, the full, that won't be till twenty twenty-six.
And that doesn't mean we bring in more tax dollars, it just means that it's spread out.
Yeah, the residential should see a little less.
A lot of people think, oh, well, we're bringing in more tax dollars.
That's where the council decides how much tax dollars.
Yeah, right, um, okay, so, so those are kind of the things we have to have, if you will.
Yeah, I think as far as, and, and based on what council directions, you know, as, you know, the, see there, the additional employees, and council's been supportive of moving forward with those, so that's just the associated impact financially, so.
But then, um, so now we get into roads and then CIP.
Yeah.
So, um, eight seventy-five, how much is the bond payment gonna be, three something?
About three, three hundred and fifty thousand is what it looks like for the, so, that's where, I guess, I, what I tried to say in there is whether, you know, that's gonna be, that it's dedicated to roads, it's bond payment versus, you know, cash levy, so whether, I mean, I think at least in this first year, um, we may need, I don't, I mean, just to make it work, we may need to reduce that eight seventy-five for a year or, or two, you know, because based on to fit in that three hundred and fifty thousand a year. Um, obviously, that's up to council and, and, you know, depending on how hard a cap that twelve to fifteen percent is, so, um. But one of the things we're gonna look, do it at, at a staff level, and probably a lot will be on myself, is to see where we're sitting in the road fund balance, and, you know, what assessments have come in, what is prepayments have come in versus what's projected revenue down the road, and, um, see if we can even use some of that fund balance and not have to levy as much, but then be able to levy more as that fund balance gets spent down.
Right, I was thinking if you, so in twenty-three, we're levying eight seventy-five, maybe in twenty-four, we levy eight twenty-five, which is another percent approximately, but then keep in mind the following year, in twenty-four, twenty-five, maybe you have to bring it up, you know, nine hundred or something, whatever, but that might also help.
I think the ra, the run I did was a little more aggressive, bringing it down, just based on the, I think I had going down to six seventy-five to incorporate the three fifty, and, I mean, and all of these are moving parts and stuff, so, um, but it is a big jump up that first year of the debt levy at three hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Well, I think we'd have to see, um, what you come in at, what the fund balance is gonna be in the roads. What roads are we gonna be doing in twenty-four, do we even have that, we weren't gonna do much in twenty-four, were we?
No.
No, so yeah, so that's why there may be.
Because you're gonna use part of the levy to pay the debt.
Yeah.
Twenty-four was kind of a maintenance only here.
Maintenance only, so, okay, so, but then I don't know if we wanna bring it down to six fifty.
I don't think we should, because everything's just getting more expensive, so that if we only go up next year, it's not gonna cover what needs, even if we just do maintenance again in two thousand twenty-five, it probably won't cover what needs, what we're putting off doing for two years.
Right, because it would only be like three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I.
After the debt, after the debt payments.
I, I don't think we lower it below eight at all, although it goes back to me saying last year we should have increased it last year.
Was the plan for the roads, uh, maybe was, was it geared towards kind of keeping everything stable over many years, or? So what I'm wondering is if we skimp on it now, is it gonna cause more expense, say, a few years from now? Or is it something where it's, yeah, it's okay, kind of?
Well, no, I think Kathleen's right, if we bring it down to the six fifty or whatever, all we're doing is kind of pushing the can down the road, so I, yeah, and it's gonna cost more, so I think, I, I wouldn't go below eight hundred, I mean, that still saves us seventy-five, I mean, that's still a one and a half, one and a half percent reduction.
So that was the plan over a long period, just to have that.
To keep growing, yeah.
Keep growing our funds, so we have the money for the plans, we have the bond for everything.
You'll need.
Roads are quite messy, yeah, we're quite messy, and we're trying to catch up.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, if I may, one thing to keep in mind, and Brian's gonna do a deep dive into this, is kind of the fun, the balance of that fund.
Right.
Um, and I think we can look at it kind of holistically, maybe over the next five years, to see if we can do what we wanna do, and then that buys some time to potentially periodically raise that over the next five years, too, and, and commit to that, you know, right now, commit to that, and then get that to a fund balance, to sustain what we need to do to kind of maintain the roads, that, the roads that I think people have become accustomed to. Um, because I think there's gonna be, you know, it was funded at eight seventy-five this year, we're not spending that much, that fund balance has grown, and doing a kind of deep dive into that, I think is important to look at, you know, how far you wanna move that lever in two thousand twenty-four. You might be able to move it more than what you think, just because there's a fund balance there, or less, depending on where you're at.
What is the fund balance right now, I don't, is it like six fifty, or?
Oh, no, it's, I think it's, it's closer to a million dollars.
Okay.
So that's why, I, so we still could be spending the money, it might just be money on hand versus levy dollars, so that's, yeah, I mean, I get the point, you don't wanna lower the baseline, because that's where we got in trouble ten, fifteen years ago, as we lowered our levy, and that's, you know, I think the one slide from the audit that I like to always keep harping on is that our taxes per capita is way less than a lot of our neighboring communities.
I love that. Well, there are, there's a few communities I'd like to see that aren't in there, though, uh, Shorewood, Victoria, um, those are ones that really need to be in there, because those are also similar size as we are, population-wise. Victoria is, is close by.
Like Victoria sometimes with the being Carver County, it's a little different, you know, they have a different model for their police services and all that kind of stuff, so Shorewood's a decent comparable.
Yeah, it just would be nice to see.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's calculated differently, it's still good to see what Carver County's doing versus what we're doing here.
So, so I, you know, the way I like to look at it is you kind of have, the, the, the points that Brian are making in the section three are, those are kind of your areas that you can move around if you feel comfortable to either reduce or increase the levy. It looks like, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, is, you know, fifteen is something we might wanna try to come down from. Um, so, you know, roads is the, one of the biggest ones that we could maybe take a pause on, not necessarily affecting, um, the ability to maintain the roads, but fully aware that we are kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit, um, but then in future years, we're gonna have to kind of focus on that more and increase that to a certain level, and I know, um, Councilmember McGregor asked, um, about, well, what do we need to be at to maintain the roads the way we want? I know Gary and Allison are working on that, there's been numbers that I think preliminarily are floating around to be around like one point eight million dollars a year, so, pretty substantial number.
That's not surprising, because I think originally back in two thousand eleven, you know, it was like a million dollars, you know, and so now we're, you know, twelve years into it, so I'm not surprised, it's one point eight.
Yeah, and that's, you know, this year's number, and then each year add a little bit for inflation, you know, so that's where we're at, and, you know, ultimately, we're, we're always gonna be chasing that goal, I don't, you know, I don't know if any city that really hits the goal, but we're always gonna be chasing it, and keeping into account, you know, when we bond, that's money that has went towards the road, so, you know, the three hundred and fifty thousand or whatever, that kind of goes towards it, too, so, you know, really, I think the, the point of the roads conversation, and even the capital equipment conversation, um, as we weigh those options, is, those are kind of levers that you can use to reduce that maybe temporarily, uh, maybe stop the pain a little bit in two thousand twenty-four, but then, no, we're gonna have to build it back up in two thousand twenty-five.
Brian, do you know what a fifty percent levy increase would be for just a house, like a five hundred thousand dollar house or a seven hundred thousand dollar house, or just a general, like, numbers versus a percentage?
Gosh, I wanna say, like, our nine percent last year was, gosh, I'm like a. No, for, wait, was that for all?
No, it was four hundred dollars, that's what she was asking.
Was it for, is that city, school, and county? Because I was gonna, I mean, it's just our.
For ours, it was like one twenty or something.
Yeah, one twenty is the number I was gonna say, so, so I guess just extrapolating out, you know.
Mine, my home value went ridiculous enough, so, my home value isn't gonna go up as much next year as it did last year, so.
Yeah, the nine percent, I think, on a median value home, around, you know, five hundred thousand or so, is probably, is like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five bucks. So if you, if you, anyway, yep, yep.
Your house is worth more than that.
Yeah, like ten bucks a month or whatever, yep, so fifteen, twelve, fifteen percent, I guess, just doing linear, it'd be a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty or something, and.
So not horrible.
But still, but, but, but I agree with that, you know, there's also this perception of a fifteen percent hike, if we can, if we can manage it, you know, and manage it at maybe ten or twelve, which would see, and right now, what I'm seeing is it, it's gonna probably be, even if we don't change anything other than the policing, it would be around twelve, twelve.
Well, because, well, that's assuming we drop the roads down six seventy-five, is that what Brian fixed his thing on?
Oh, okay, sorry.
I don't like that number, so.
If we make the number back to eight hundred, that's another two percent, and then you're back up to fourteen, fifteen, or whatever, so.
But maybe I think a lot of it has to do with perception, and granted, it has, like, we save fifteen percent, but if we correlate that to, this is a hundred and sixty dollars a year, not four hundred, it's a lot more powerful for our residents. If you're like, this, this is for the roads, this is for the increase in the police, this is for this, like, fifty percent sounds bad, a hundred and sixty dollars a year doesn't sound that bad.
Yeah, the sale, it's just how you, how you word it, I'm just not sure I'm buying off any hundred and sixty dollars.
We can, we can run those numbers.
They'll run the numbers, they'll run the numbers, so, I mean, maybe then, and again, a five hundred thousand dollar house is, you know, median, I suppose, more, more like six hundred.
Yeah, yeah, these are house values that we use on those should be a little bit higher, based on everyone's new home values.
Usually, we have a range of high, medium, low.
Three fifty, I don't think there's a house in a district that's.
So, you know, like, you have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, as we develop the budget, we will definitely have those numbers available, and, you know.
Good.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind is that I think we're gonna raise the water bills, like I remember.
Right.
Saying the.
But that's us, but that's usage, that's tied to how much you use, so, I mean, even with the rate.
To that point of people getting hit, you know, more, more taxes.
Right.
But the water isn't taxes, the water is usage, if you don't like your water bill, don't use as much water.
Don't use water.
You can use water, it's really easy not to hit the second, third.
Yeah, it is, it is. So, um, for the capital equipment plan, um, you're saying not raising it, doing the same?
Um, and then, yeah, I guess, we're, we're just in the initial stages of the staff review of, of requests on the equipment, um, so initially, it would look like we may, may, would need to look, look at an equipment certificate. I know a lot of times we try to mirror that with, you know, a, a bond issuance of another, you know, project. Um, I don't know if we'll have anything in two thousand twenty-four ready, but that's something we'll be looking at, I mean, in a perfect world, just, I think, years ago, we were at three hundred thousand for a cash levy in the CIP equipment fund, that would get us a lot closer, and depending on if council would allocate some of these police dollars to, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand, you'd be almost there, but, um, yeah, so that's sort of, I guess, in flux, as far as if, you know, if we'll have just the cash levy, or whether going up to two hundred thousand would, would help with some other dollars added in, but that's obviously another fifty thousand dollar impact to the levy if we, we do that, so that'll be, um, I think, um, when staff presents that in August, that'll be, obviously, one of the pieces we'll present as far as how, how the funding sources of that, the final.
The only thing is, is if we can't fund a hundred percent with cash, and we have to do equipment certificates, then it seems to make more sense to keep the cash and let that continue to build, and then just do an equipment certificate.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, to do an equipment certificate for a hundred thousand, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
No, I think it makes more sense to do like a three, four, five hundred thousand, I mean, versus, yes, one or two, or whatever.
Or if we can, for two thousand twenty-four, don't do any equipment certificates or whatever, um, and then just do a whole bunch in two thousand twenty-five, I don't know, might be another option, too.
Could you explain what the, uh, equipment certificates are for, for, you know, it's like recent?
Okay, good, good question, yeah, um, so basically, you can borrow money, um, but it's on a five-year plan, and you can borrow it, and it has to be for capital purchases, so, and then, so it's, it's, it's basically a loan, and, and then it's a five-year loan. So when you look at, at Brian's budget, you'll see, um, equipment certificates, you know, there's what, eighty thousand or something like that, and I think we have, how many, three now, still?
Yeah, we've got a twenty twenty-three, a twenty twenty, trying to think if we got one other, yeah, we've got two or three equipment certificates outstanding, yeah.
So when we bonded for the streets, we also included money for the equipments, for the equipment, but when you pay it back, it's separated out, so the, the bond for the streets is three fifty, the bond, the equipment certif, and that's twenty years, and then the bond for the equipment certificates is five years, and that's maybe fifty thousand, whatever debt payment it is.
So the interest rates on them were very favorable, then?
They're the same interest rate, I believe.
Yeah, like as far as, as far as the.
Because it's one bond.
One bond.
Right, and we got three point.
Yeah, it was three point three eight, right?
Right, and I'm not sure that that's gonna be the case next year, probably not, so, now, the question I have is, so if, can we borrow for a year, like, let's say we don't, we want, we have to purchase equipment, but we don't wanna float a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond, could we borrow from a fund and then float the equipment certificate in twenty-five, and then pay it right back?
I think you can do like a temporary interfund loan or something, we haven't done a ton of that.
And, and I'm not necessarily proposing that, it's just, it seems, you know, you don't necessarily wanna float a certificate for a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, uh, you, you can do that, you, you're basically saying that you'll temporarily, you know, fund it through, let's say, the water fund or some other fund, tree fund, whatever, and then pay that back when we would issue a larger bond that we would tag a equipment certificate on to.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that, I mean, yeah, it's a, that's an accounting mechanism that is allowed, um, we just haven't done it.
You, I know, you have to do a resolution.
Yep, yeah. Council action, so, yeah. So, yeah, there'll be, yeah, further discussion in those couple areas, as well as, you know, obviously, the, the general fund will be a lot to go over, too, so.
Okay.
Any other?
Claudia, questions?
No.
Anne?
Yep, I'm fine.
Peter? Okay, all right, do you have?
I think so, yeah, this is just, yeah, this is good feedback for when we, uh, really keep going on this in July here, and then council will see in, in August, we can start refining things a little better, getting into the finer details, so.
So with the roads, again, kind of getting back to that, um, when you do this, tell us what the fund balance is, and tell us what it would be in two thousand twenty-four, after we do the projects that we have scheduled for two thousand twenty-four, so that we can clearly see how much is in there, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I see.
I mean, if, if we were to do six fifty like you want, then what, what does that look like in two thousand twenty-five? Um, I think that would be good for us to see.
Okay, yep, I think that's good.
All right, okay, so, let's do council reports, and then if we have time, we'll do staff reports. We'll start with Claudia, anything?
Uh, just the Westonka Community and Commerce, um, most of the things involve mound, but the food shelter's having a big fundraiser um, at the Back Channel Brewery, and, uh, what are we doing there? Um, it's going to be a music festival, and that's August twenty-sixth. Um, Judy Schmeling came and spoke about the Our Lady of the Lake Incredible Festival, which is September fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. Um, Natalie Webster came and spoke about the, um, Yacht Club Hotel and Marina, which was the office building right on Shoreline Drive.
Oh, okay.
You know, you know, on Cook's Bay.
Okay, yeah.
That's next to the apartment buildings.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a hotel, a lot of people aren't happy, mostly the people that live next to her on the apartment building, but a lot of people are, so that's exciting, and, um. I think that's about it. That's kinda big news for mound, a little hotel.
Yeah, a hotel, yeah.
I'd put my guests there.
Good, all right, and any date or, um, completion timeframe?
Uh, no, I didn't mind that, but, uh, it was Natalie Webster.
But they've already gotten approval from mound? Okay, so, probably within a year or two?
Exciting.
All right.
Well, in the, in your Sarah Creek Water, they did the alum treatment, and apparently it was tremendously successful, but, uh, Brian from, you know, uh, Watershead District said it looked like an aquarium afterwards. I assume it was a clean aquarium.
Yeah.
Anyway, and then, uh, we did finalize the budget for next year, and, uh, Trista's contribution will go down about sixty dollars.
Come on.
Sixty dollars?
We're holding the line here.
We're holding the line.
So it'll be about fifteen thousand roughly, but, uh, so, so that was good news.
Good.
Uh, I've been to two Gillespie Center meetings since, uh, last time, and, uh, they are doing their best to be financially responsible. And they are looking at cutting costs, and, and they are looking at, um, they're looking at everything that we looked at January before last. And now with this new president, they are taking steps toward it.
Okay.
Um, the big issue right now is that all the money that the cities gave to the Gillespie Center, it is, the bulk of it, uh, the money that it's making in Choua has never been touched. So, because they're no longer under the agreement with the cities, they are looking at possibly using that to supplement what they can't make, which is good and bad, um, as long as they don't touch the actual endowment, uh, that was, that's, that's possible.
Yeah, it was always so, originally, it was, they thought this, um, I don't know, one, one point three million, whatever it was, um, would then sit there and make money, and the money that it would make is what they would use to supplement their, their center.
Yeah, there's a huge disagreement on that, some people, yes, some people are saying what you're saying.
Yeah.
And then some people are saying that, no, it was never supposed to be touched, it was just supposed to sit there, and they were supposed to make up the money from activities and everything else, but that isn't working out well.
Well, but then why would they just have it sitting there, yeah? Yeah, no, it was my understanding, and it's three million was, they were supposed to, yeah, it was like three million, and, and then that money was gonna make, who knows, fifty thousand a year, whatever, you know, well, it's probably not making that much, but.
It's actually making more.
Oh, well, good, and then they were gonna use that, so the three million would always sit there
Right.
to make money.
Right.
And the other money would go then, yeah.
Well, that's the direction they're headed, and so that's very positive.
Good, good.
I don't have an update.
Okay.
Done, got any news, done.
So, um, well, Jasper and I attended the, um, LMC, uh, League of Minnesota Cities, um, conference last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Uh, good, good speakers, so one of the things I wanna say, so, the keynote speaker was talking about, uh, community engagement and how important it is. And the reason I'm saying this is because we have another, um, thing that we're gonna talk about in just a minute, and it, it is important, and here's why it's important, because, I already told you this, I told staff this earlier, um, this is my spiel, this is my pitch, it's because it gives the, um, residents in our community an opportunity to interact, not only with staff, but elected officials in a positive manner. And that's, that's one of the big, big positives and outcomes of community engagement. It also helps people feel like they're part of the community, and it's also can help us for recruiting. Um, and I should've done this on the bus tour, but I didn't, but I will next time. I will make it clear that people should volunteer for our planning and parks commissions, um, be on the city council. As you know, there's always a, a shortage of people wanting to, to help out, so, um, it's also that opportunity. With that, um, Jasper, Ally, myself, and, um, and Pam Mortensen is also part of this little group, we've been talking about the, um, holiday event, so, should I carry, do you wanna do it?
Oh, no, Gary Peters was there as well.
No, Gary was gonna buy us all presents, but then he had to be at this meeting, so he couldn't go out shopping, so, uh, we missed out on that one. Anyhow, okay, Gary was there, thank you, so Public Works is gonna be. Poor Gary, uh, and Gary's gonna do a lot for this, but, so, we're gonna plant a tree. Yes, Gary, please, please, I apologize, so we're gonna plant a tree, so the date, uh, that we're thinking is, it would be a Thursday, November thirtieth, so that's one week after Thanksgiving, and it's right before mound or any of the other communities are gonna do theirs, so we're gonna be in line first, if you will, and it's also right, the weekend right previous, or to the start of most people, you know, doing Christmas shopping and decorating and all of that, so it's November thirtieth, we're thinking between, um, five, five and seven. And, and we'll be advertising this in Facebook, Twitter, um, all, all kinds of different ways. And then, uh, we're gonna try and get, um, some food trucks, and it'll be a lot of fun, and we'll, we'll give you a more detailed description of everything that's gonna be there and what's gonna happen once we have a few things firmed up. So we're, this is kinda infancy stages, and Pam is gonna be working on getting sponsorships, so if you know of a business or of an individual that would like to help sponsor the event, we're looking for sponsors, um, anywhere from five hundred, two hundred and fifty, or more than five hundred if they want to, but, um, so, we're gonna try and, um, do some fundraising for that to cover some of those expenses. Anything else? And we'll, we'll update you again as we get some of these things confirmed, but.
How big's the tree gonna be?
Um, really big, no. Gary, you're gonna check into that and see, so, what, initially, maybe ten, twelve feet, probably not real tall?
Probably a ten or twelve, I, it won't get much bigger, I don't think that's faded in.
Right, and then it'll grow. Fur. But, yeah, initially, it'll be about ten, twelve feet, so, not real tall, but Gary will be able to reach the top with a star.
Yay.
She wanted to do it.
Oh, Ally wanted the star.
She wanted the star, she gets to put it on.
We're planning on, like, fire pits, like, maybe three fire troughs, um, for people to do smores in, and, um, I'm gonna help split wood. Ha ha. Gary, you think I'm kidding, right? So that's, that's kind of that, but, um, that's really all I have. Do we have time for staff updates, do we have? Any questions?
I think we have some time, um, I don't really have much, other than we have, we, the LMC conference was good, it was, uh, well-attended, I think they had over seven hundred people there this year, I think it was the biggest one ever, so, keeps growing and growing and growing, so, I think they're gonna continue to have it in Duluth, too.
You know, I had heard that, but then I heard from somebody that's a council member in Rochester, and she said it's gonna be in Rochester next year. So, that's up in the air, to be determined.
Yeah, uh, and I wanted to say, you know, there's, I know the mayor attends, if there's any council members that wanna attend, you, you, you can, um, so, we'll let you know when that is, and if you're interested in doing it, um, I'd say the LMC conference is more catered toward elected officials, some of the, um, workshop, um, kind of topics are more policy-related than, you know, operational, but, so if you're interested, uh, let us know, we can get you registered, get you some information on it, and, and you can go and attend, so.
I did attend one, um, con, one, uh, workshop on, um, what HR personnel wants, or doesn't want the council to know, or something like that. So anyhow, it was interesting, and I talked to, uh, your cohort in Shorewood, she was there as one of the.
Standing.
Yep, panelists, so I will share with staff what I, uh, what our personnel committee maybe could do a little different, but, just some ideas, yeah.
That's all I have.
There will be a July twenty-four park commission meeting, so I need to be on.
I will be at tonight's, okay, anybody can be at the July twenty-fourth?
I cannot, I've done any of that.
Okay, Kathleen?
Sound good, thank you.
And then we're having a, um, park commission meeting in August.
Yes, um, yeah, yes, we'll have one up, August, I believe.
Okay, and I'll, I'll be there.
Okay.
We're gonna try and recruit some people to help out volunteer for the holiday event. We'll see how that goes, okay. Well, what, we don't know yet, um, we're looking at, um, possibly trying to recruit, um, either, um, Boy Scouts, older Boy Scouts, um, just to help out with maybe fire trough, or parking, or, you know, a few things like that, so, we'll, we'll let you know. How many people do we expect, or hope for? Maybe a hundred or two hundred?
Two hundred?
I, we, we have no idea.
Probably saying it's Trista that did.
Oh, I don't know that many.
Come on, that's a lot. Probably not offer food, people would come.
Well, that, we're looking at trying to get some food trucks, but that would be pay, I mean, they would pay, so.
How do the food trucks do on Trista Day?
They did all right, so, um, I think we had to, for, uh, a couple of them, we had to front like fifteen hundred dollars, I think we got back seven hundred dollars on one of them, and the other one, we didn't, I don't think we're gonna get anything back, um, so they did okay, I don't know if it was, you know, gangbusters or anything like that, but, um, definitely less expensive than hot dogs.
Yeah, and we're looking, yeah, well, and again, we'll update you.
Is it an ice cream truck in November?
Yeah, in November, right, she was thinking, donuts.
Mini donuts.
So, and, so that's, that's it, so we can then be adjourned until five thirty, it's five oh one, so five thirty, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Claudia, all those in favor signify with a aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes.